Right. What I assume is actually six thirty.
Yes.
The clock is wrong. And for those who are interested, uh, we have transitioned to this format for tonight for a couple of reasons. One is most of the meeting is related to um group discussion about zoning ordinance items. And um apparently there are some audio issues with the equipment at the larger more normal location. So we've informalized ourselves and hopefully the audio will function properly. For those who are interested. That being said. Let's do roll call.
Uh Commissioner Wise.
President.
Commissioner Brenna.
President.
Commissioner Newick.
Project.
Commissioner Rafi.
Present.
And um we have council member Nordby on Zoom and Chair Leece.
Present.
And I'm also here, the uh planning director.
Good. Thank you. With that, we have a brief agenda tonight. Um we need a couple of items of note. And if anyone has any comments about the agenda to make changes, um bring it up. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
Like that motion?
Motion by Brenna.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rafi. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a question.
You have a question?
I'm just looking at this right now, um.
Too late.
Was it a special meeting on July sixth? It was a regular meeting, was it not?
It was regular, yeah.
You might wanna make note of that, but the um.
June was the special one.
Got it, so it's just a typo, so I'll have Chris.
Where was that? That was in the meeting minutes?
Yep, it's under.
Oh, one of the three.
Just the title of it.
In the first line under call to order, Patrick.
You're looking at former uh at meeting minutes, that one, the approval of the July sixth special meeting minutes.
Yeah.
But you're looking at that, okay, well, we're just getting to that, so.
Oh, sorry.
We just uh it, we just adopted uh agenda.
Oh.
Um, that's fine.
Being formal situation.
But it was, I think it was a normal meeting, what would have, what would have made it special?
I think it was just what you had said, that it was special in June and then it probably.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Accidentally.
Okay.
Before we do one, do we not have an October meeting?
Correct, we do not, um I'm gonna be away to plan conference, unless you wanna have one and we can schedule it for a different, a different date there.
No, just curious, there's nothing that would be coming up for?
If there is, I don't have anything yet, um and I don't think there would be any time to review any applications that we might have.
Oh, we don't need to force it.
I would be probably very happy to not to have a meeting in October because I'm gonna be traveling out of the country for two weeks, then I get back, then I go to a three day conference. It's local, but it's like. Everything happening.
Oh.
So we'll continue with our plan of having.
Continue with the plan.
So granted, you don't want us to go up to St. Cloud and meet up with him?
Oh, well, I mean. I'm not sure how that works, but.
Isn't that where the uh, isn't that where the?
Yeah, that's where, that's where it is.
Yeah.
Well, you can certainly feel free to have a meeting without me. I'm good with that. All right, other than the change uh on the, this, this is a second, second item, third item. Fourth item, I guess technically, um on our agenda. Um is approval of meeting minutes from the August third meetings. Um other than the change related to the approval of the July sixth minutes, which was just mentioned, is there anything else that anybody saw? That needs attention? I did not see anything else myself. That being the case, I would entertain a motion to adopt the minutes as modified from the August third meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Commissioner Muley. Second.
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Weiss, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting minutes from August third approved. That being said. Meeting is open to the public if there's someone who wishes to speak. Mr. Smalls, are you interested?
Yes, with the uh owl in the middle of the room. Said to be the owl.
I noticed that you're supposed to be taking up, what, residential codes, looking at them?
Mm-hmm.
And I, as a suggestion, and you probably might be doing this, is that you uh, when you come up with the code or you're reviewing it, check with code enforcement.
Yeah.
You are, to see if it can be in, actually enforced or actually enforced without embarrassing someone. You know, it gets a little uh sticky as to uh what did they really mean?
What, what, you have an example?
Uh, parking an RV on a hard surface.
Uh-huh.
And uh if you'll go around and look at some of these pop-up campers, they're parked on a square piece of concrete. Somewhere in the lawn. Do you have to access your hard surface by a hard sur- surface driveway? Or can you just run it across the lawn and stick con- concrete squares under the tires? You know, anybody can, you know, play the game, you're not clear as to whether this parking area must be accessed by a hard surface driveway. And that certainly would put a stop to front yard parking on two squares of concrete.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there is other things that have just come up that I had discussions with your prior chairperson. And one of those, uh, this is the RVs, which uh are obnoxious when they're parked. And but, you know, that's the way it is. But um RVs, when parked in a side yard, have to have a screen. And if you put it in the backyard, how many screens do you need? The adjacent uh screen from the adjacent property. Well, how many scr- uh adjacent properties do you have in a backyard? And I uh would, willing to bet with you, there's never been a screen constructed for an RV, so if it can't, you know, if nobody's doing it, it can't be enforced, or you don't wanna enforce it, get rid of it.
Then don't bother.
Don't, right, uh because I'm watching a situation where um, I don't know if you have any power over these things, but on a zoning permit, they don't require you to submit a drawing with setbacks and showing what your setback is when you build something that requires a setback. The only thing that's required, and I thought this, I just got the answer back a little while ago from, who's your running uh?
Chris Turney.
Chris. Uh, I, I was looking at one that's being constructed and I said, give me the draw uh data request, give me the drawing where this dri- driveway appears on the lot. Oh, don't, don't require it, the only require that they make a statement, that they know what the requirements are, and they will follow them. That's it. So I don't know what code enforcement would do in order to go out and check to see if it met requirements.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I mean, it's strange drawings, and this is a, a deal with me, I know, you know, you're giving me more than three minutes. I had to plot out a for zoning on my property in Bayfield, Wisconsin, Lake Shore property. And it had, I had to drive stakes and I had to make a drawing. And the zoning guy came out and ran his tape measure all over to see where my cabin was gonna be. That's none of that, that, back about four years ago, there was a, a house that was asking for, or um uh they were, uh they bought it uh from an estate and they wanted to make a bigger garage, and there was a variance uh involved in that. And I said uh at the meeting at the council, there's no stakes. They, they wanted a bigger garage, they got the variance for the bigger garage. And I came in here and I said, well, where, where's the garage gonna be visually, where is it gonna be? Where's the stakes? Don't require stakes in this city. Weird, really weird, anyway. Um, that one, oh, and I guess there's still one in, in effect about uh the garbage containers. They can't be in the, I don't know, is it the front yard?
I don't think that's in our zoning ordinance.
No, there is something, uh there uh as to, it, they cannot be.
They're supposed to be screened if they are.
Right, but where is the front yard?
Mm-hmm.
And I have an L-shaped rambler and.
There are definitions on how to, how to say where the front yard is, it's typically.
Well, yes, where the front yard is, or it might say in front of the house. Uh, uh, the last time I looked at it, it's been quite a while, because they don't enforce it. These containers are, they wanna keep them off the curb is what is the concern with this. But where, uh, you know, uh, where has code enforcement ever said to someone, hey, your containers are except on the curb, they get uh an issue with them. But I happen to have an L-shaped rambler and I have a front of the house, I have a front yard, and I have a front of the garage, and so where my containers are, are in front of the garage.
So um if I'm understanding your, your primary comment, which I think is very, very justified, if you're going to put it in the code and enforce it, fine. If there's not gonna be any enforcement, then why is it in there in the first place?
Right.
If you care about it, put it in there. If you don't care about it enough to enforce it, don't bother.
Mm-hmm.
Which I, I think is a, is a very rational way to approach it. It's extremely difficult to achieve that, but we are trying.
Well, I think code enforcement would uh love it if.
Yeah.
Took everything out and said.
It's a free throw.
Free fire zone, man.
Wild, wild west, let's bring it back.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're up to.
Wait. Okay.
Public hearings, which we don't have any, so we're up to item seven, which is commission business, which goes back to you, Brandon.
Okay, uh I don't have an official presentation and I, um but I, I guess I would like to start by just addressing some of the comments that were just brought up. So I agree with his statement that if we're not gonna enforce it, we probably shouldn't have it in our ordinance, so that's solid principle. The other thing is about the lack of survey or site plan or plot plan or whatever the terminology is. I a hundred percent agree, it's very difficult to do our jobs without having the ability to accurately measure.
Why, why is that not required? I thought it was required.
Well, we try to make it so that we are, we're, we're asking for it, often we're not getting it, and then if we do get it, or we'll, we'll get a lot of pushback because of cost. So I think we could use some guidance from this, from this group as to what is the appropriate balance in terms of when, when should it be required to, to give that really detailed drawing?
I think, I think there's some, some basics, one is if you're changing the footprint of the building.
Mm-hmm.
That's.
What about a deck?
Hmm, well, actually, when I built my deck, it was in the backyard, which clearly had no setback issues. I mean, set, I'm setback eighty feet from any property line, so for me, it was non-issue. The, the only requirement I had was I would have to permit it if it was attached to the house.
Hmm.
So I didn't attach it to the house.
Loops.
What about that mark and mouse?
Yep.
Right, and self-supporting.
Mm-hmm.
So I didn't have to permit it in any way. So you can find those loopholes if you want that, but, but I think, I think the key in that case, if a plot plan or a site plan was required with any deck expansion, I would have had to come up with something.
Mm-hmm.
And in my case, it probably would have been approximate, you know, with a laser measure or something, the fence is about eighty feet over there.
Yeah.
And I would have come up with something that, it's approximately this, clearly there are no issues, right? It's an issue when you start getting close to setbacks.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm. So you have to make the rule and then, and allow for, oh, well, in this case, it just simply doesn't matter.
Mm-hmm.
But in this case, it does, we still have to ask for the document.
Right.
And it doesn't have to be a formalized registered land surveyor doing it, it just has to be reasonably accurate representation of what's going on.
But I would like to bring up a corollary to that, and that when you talk about the land surveyor, and this may have changed because it's been two years since I had my property surveyed. But the city provided me with a list of surveyors at that time, none of which were still in business.
Um, did he call RUG?
Uh, they gave me a handout.
Yeah, they, cuz they were pretty good.
Yeah.
I mean, I, from what I've heard.
Yeah.
They're still around.
Well, I wound up getting uh the uh survey master for, I think uh uh, one of the northern counties, not on the north side of the city, uh does surveying on his spare time. So I found him through Mindot. But uh, you know, like I said, there was a list of like, I don't know, twelve or fourteen different survey companies, and every single one of them that I tried, the phone numbers were no longer working. So.
Yeah.
As, as far as site plans go for when we do zoning approvals, oftentimes we get some pretty rudimentary and terrible drives.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah, oh, sure.
And so our, our building inspector is relying on, on those, our zoning administrator and our code enforcement officers are all trying to make sense of this. So what Chris is doing um is the best we're able to do at this time without the regulations, is take our Ramsey County air photo and try to use blue beam induced and measurements to, to verify what they say their intent is, is actually going to work.
Right.
And if it does, then we'll approve it or disapprove it or approve it with intent stays with the letter that's attached and that gets uploaded and used by the inspector and the code enforcement. It would be nice to have some standards for when we do have those, it's close, it's too close to call moments where we need to have more precise um data.
Well, I think to require uh a plot plan or a site plan, whatever you wanna call it, and to require um modi- modifications to property elements that are in fact regulated.
Mm-hmm.
To have them dimensioned.
Mm-hmm.
From property lines.
Yeah.
I think is, is a fairly reasonable, fairly easy thing to, to accomplish.
Mm-hmm.
And you don't need a surveyor to do it, you can get fairly close if you know where your property line is.
Mm-hmm.
Which I'm sure some people don't have a clue.
Often get the bell.
You know, but it, there has to be some sort of um action in that regard, I would think.
The dimension off of the house, like the existing.
You could dimension.
Instead of having.
You could.
Get a survey and get the property pins in there.
Yeah.
Um, I remember when I bought my house here, I pulled the permit files for it, and there had been some work in the seventies and some in the eighties too, where they had, I forget the work it was, but it was fairly nice, hand-drawn site plans with dimensioning, so just because it's hand-drawn doesn't mean it's poor quality, there certainly are.
Uh, the, I agree.
It can just be a sketch, and that's, in fact, usually you need them if you're purchasing a property, you need to have that.
Yeah.
And I remember the first time I bought a house and a plot plan was required, and I had to pay a guy fifty bucks to do it. And he drove by and did this little, drew a rectangle and put two dimensions on it and walked away, you know? And I thought at that time, which was now, you know, thirty-five plus years ago, I paid fifty bucks for that, I could have done better myself, right? But I needed him to do it.
Right.
But I think that we should include that, it should be a requirement for especially, well, it, it is a requirement for commercial development.
Mm-hmm.
But it isn't for residential.
Well, it is if we're pulling a permit for a new building, for example, or.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, yeah, I think that going back to our review of the administrative chapters, um I can pull this discussion into that.
Yeah.
And try to finish that.
Well, if you're going to, what if you're going to um make a modification to the alignment of your driveway?
That is an issue that we have had.
Seems like you would wanna know that.
Yeah, we do wanna know that, and we wanna make sure that if you're close or you're on the property line now.
Yeah.
I think that in those cases, well, I guess this is up for discussion. How, how are we gonna handle it? So if it is a situation where your driveway is a non-conformity and so on the property line it's not supposed to be, you can replace it in kind.
Yes.
To the exact same dimensions.
Yeah.
But how do you demonstrate exactly that it is gonna be the same dimensions when you go back out there with code enforcement?
Hmm, right, you'd have to have a before and after documentation of some sort.
The best we have is Ramsey County's air photo.
Yeah.
Right on.
Right.
So pin, pin that topic, I suppose, for a few.
Or photographs or something that would say, you know, take a photograph before, take a photograph after from the exact same location and
Mm-hmm.
demonstrate that all you did is repave.
Mm-hmm.
So is there a, a, a certain distance to either the property line and easement or um or a setback that would justify um where you can say if it's within a certain number of feet of any one of these three items, this is a step that you need, you need to go through.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it, cuz what I just heard, as we, as you guys were talking, I mean, really good conversation, I completely agree that w- when we hit that stage of zoning, I think it's definitely something worth exploring. But in all the cases that I just heard, it's, it seems like one of those three, if there's a certain number of feet within that's gonna approach one of those, would justify some more detailed actions, whether it's a before and after, whether it is um
I think.
Again, it just.
Yeah, I think you define the type of modification that's going on, and then that's a set rule.
Yeah.
Then the, the quality of what we get for a deliverable from the proposer
Mm-hmm.
is gonna be all remap, but if you say, if you're going to add a deck or a porch, if you're gonna change the perimeter of your, your residence building, if you're going to realign, change alignment of your driveway more than six inches or something like that, you know, I mean, just basically a repave wouldn't require it, but if you're gonna move it, it would require it or enlarge it or something like that. Then you just require that you, you have a drawing that demonstrates what those dimensions are that you're going to do and, and or photographs. Cuz I think in some cases photographs are just really simple to deal with.
They're really helpful to understand impacts too.
Yeah.
Cuz I would anticipate as.
And just make the rule.
I would anticipate, and again, just trying to think ahead, is everything that we're talking about is all based on redevelopment. And I would anticipate that's only gonna increase, and as properties and the space available on those properties of what people wanna put on them is becoming larger and less property to be around it.
Yeah.
We're gonna run into that more and more all the time.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be less.
The impervious coverage is another one where we have to um sometimes it's obvious that they're, they're fine, and whatever it is that they're proposing, but often because these lots in this community are so small and there's a lot of accessory buildings and houses and driveways, et cetera, it gets close, and it's really difficult for us to tell without having an accurate survey.
Hmm.
Wh- where does code enforcement come in with us rewriting this? Are we?
I'm pulling in Jason as it seems appropriate, so in our discussion here, I had some comments and, and there we should check in with Jason Malter to see if his uh definitions are in alignment with our rental code.
Right.
And so he, he didn't have his review completed by the time this was sent out, though I have talked to him since, and I, I think that there will be a number of additional edits to the definitions.
Are we asking them, uh it, it sounds like we're asking them to verify what we're writing, but are we asking them what kind of problems do they see regularly uh that may need to be changed in here or added to here?
Very good question.
That specific question hasn't been asked, but it's kind of like conversations involve in that direction.
Hmm.
So I, I think that I think you could safely say that, yes, we're, we're communicating with each other through this process.
Yeah, I, I just know, you know, we, anybody that works for a large organization, we all know these people that will do exactly what they're asked to do and they don't think outside the box.
And then we have people who'll say, you know, if you'll do this, this will make things so much better, and I just wanted to make sure that we're
Yeah.
not falling into that.
Yeah, a- at least with code enforcement and fire, we absolutely are doing, are doing that.
Okay, great.
Because there's a lot of overlap and it doesn't make sense to have regulations that are, that are conflicting or the wording is just so different that we can't interpret it easily, it's, it's not useful for residents or customers.
Yeah.
Um, so we're trying to make it easier for everybody to administer. So I guess before we go on, I will just make a statement that Jason is on um on Zoom. Jason, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna put my, I'm not gonna be looking at the Zoom anymore, um cuz I need to look at the, the ordinance on my, on my screen, so if you wanna chime in at any time, just chime in, you don't need to be um.
Recognized.
Yeah, you don't need to be recognized, you, you've got full access to communicate.
Okay, sounds good.
Oh, it works, we can hear you.
Excellent.
This, all thing is doing the trick. Fantastic, okay, so again, I don't have a big presentation, I don't really, I don't have any presentation, I just, I haven't had a lot of time over the past month to put into this ordinance update, and so I tried to find something that was bite-sized that I could take, take a crack at, and so I started with the residential uses, and so what this document is is um taking all of the definitions related to residences um and all of the regulations related to them that are living in a different part of the code completely, plus the table, which is in a different part, and kind of bringing it all together so you could see it together. And so when we develop the, the ordinance, there's gonna be, I think, a land use chapter, which is going to have the definition for those items, just like it is laid out here, and then if there is a specific regulation applicable, then that'll be with the definition. So if you wanna know what, what it takes to build a, I don't know, what do we have in here? Um, a multifamily dwelling, I think it's pretty obvious what that is, three plus units.
Is the table that's in here a, a generalized table, cuz it has the MU districts and things in it?
What do you mean by?
I mean, this is, is this a table that is actually gonna be found elsewhere?
It could be. It does, it.
As opposed to right here in this spot?
I don't really have any strong feelings about it.
Okay.
Right now, it, it lives in the appendix.
Okay.
And so.
Okay, that.
So this is the exact same table that is the current table.
That's what I was saying.
Where things were not addressed in the table that we did talk about elsewhere in the code, I added them to the table.
So you've made those updates.
Yeah, but I don't know that we wanna keep this as it is exactly, cuz I think we need to finesse, are these land uses necessary? Um, so just to start with, I say apartment is a multifamily structure.
Yes.
We don't need to.
Mm-hmm.
We don't need to have it there, and that was one of the things that Jason said, this is confusing, we should eliminate that definition.
There are a couple of cases like that, there's a, um, there's a twin house.
Mm-hmm.
And I said, my comment to myself, cuz these are my notes for myself, why separate, why is this a, a separate definition from a duplex?
Uh, a twin and a duplex, in, in my experience, there's, there's three categories, at least that's how we do it, from my training. Um, a twin, a duplex, and a two-flat. It's different.
Hmm.
Um, a two-flat is going to be like a one on top of the other, or to be a three, they have those in Madison.
Triplex.
Um. And maybe that's just multifamily, and maybe that's not necessary, but the difference between the duplex and the, and the two-family is ownership of lots.
Multiple properties.
Yeah.
The townhouse is also a multiple property situation.
Oh, that's a new way of thinking about it.
Well, it generally, it is, so why is a townhouse any different from a duplex except for duplex is only two and a townhouse might be four?
That's a really good point, and I haven't done that.
So you could, you could say, do the various, very thorough definition that you've put together here for townhouse dwelling, and it includes two, two or more, I think is what it says, right, one family dwelling, then a group of two or more, and you've got a duplex. So, or you have a two-family dwelling, no, that's different, cuz it, two-family dwelling is that, by the way, that item one under two-family dwelling, very confusing wording.
Um, I didn't touch, touch any of the regulations of that.
Looking at that and I'm thinking, oh, man, we gotta work on that, because it's really, goes all over the place.
Well, and that one has come into play recently, um because of a proposal we had on seventeenth in Delaware.
Yeah.
Where it was one of the, the developers that were interested in doing um doing some work that there was gonna, it, it's automatically triggering the PUD.
Hmm.
But the P U D was conflicting with this particular. Provision. So I guess at this.
But a two flame, two-family dwelling is a single parcel. A townhouse is not. The twin house is two separate parcels. So the twin house could go away if you've got the definition for town.
I think it would be helpful for me if we just said what we want in there.
Yeah.
So a townhouse and a duplex.
I think you leave, I think you leave townhouse in there and I don't think you need. Uh, twin house because a twin house is essentially a townhouse. The definition is the same, except it's two. It's defined as being two.
Got it.
So I think you take the twin house away because you don't need it. Um, there was also reference somewhere.
Can I ask another question?
Can I just say something before you ask your question? No, no, I, I don't want this to get lost because the duplex. When we get later to those, the setbacks and the lot size regulation, that comes into play. So just put a pin in that.
Okay.
I don't see condo on here anywhere.
Yeah, we don't want those. It's an ownership type. It's not a.
It's an ownership type. That's true.
It doesn't really affect the zoning.
The wooden condo, would condos fall under one of these?
Condo could be any of these.
A condo could be anyone. Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Technically. Because it, it's a matter of who owns what part.
Okay.
Because the, the way I generally understand condos is you own everything from the paint finish in. If you own a condo, somebody else owns the structure and the property.
Property, interesting.
That's the way I've always understood condos to be, but you know, then again, and just recently I heard a guy talking about having bought an apartment in New York. Because you buy apartments in New York. Here you rent apartments.
Right, and you buy a condo.
And you buy a condo or you buy a townhouse.
But it's still the same.
It's like, it's like.
So structurally, it's still the.
Still, yeah, from a zoning perspective, it really doesn't matter very much, I think is kind of the point.
Right here, co-op's legal in Minnesota, you know?
Sure have no idea.
Okay.
What do you mean by a co-op? Like a, a building that has, um, like multiple family or multiple unrelated individuals living in one. Space. I don't know.
Because that's.
That's a, that's a code enforcement issue or not a code, but like a rental.
Well, the co, uh, co-ops are like what you have in New York City.
Yeah.
Some, many of them, you know, where you buy the apartment. And so it's different from a condo in that, uh, you know, the condo association. Takes care of the maintenance of the, the building and everybody pays into the condo association. A co-op doesn't have the condo association. So, you know, people can, they, they have a little bit more. Versatility. They don't have to meet with the, the standards of the co-op as long as they meet the codes.
Here, here's a response to that. I just did a simple Google and it looks like Minneapolis has cooperative housing arrangements all over the place. So I, I'm gonna.
Probably.
Say that they're legal.
I was just curious.
I think so, that it might be, I don't know that we have something that matches that, but we've got this.
But I think it would fall under the same kind of definition of the condo would, you know, it's, they're going to be multifamily housing. So.
But you raise a good point though. Do we want to allow those types of living situations where you have? And maybe that's a zoning code issue and maybe that's. Building code issue. Do we want to have more than a certain number of individuals living in one?
But we've got that in the code right now, up to eight people.
Which that definition is bad.
Oh, I don't know about this.
Lodging house?
Yeah.
Take house, yeah.
But a co-op would be different from a lodging house, although I suppose it could.
Could be, could be similar, yeah.
Could be similar.
Yeah.
Uh, the one thing I want to raise though is the cottage dwelling.
Yeah.
I'm glad to see that we have something for. Residential units of a thousand square feet or less, but does it have to be tied into, uh, other cottage dwellings, you know, could? Would somebody say, cause I, I think even some of our houses that are out there now, uh, are less than a thousand square feet and then. You know, I'm just thinking, you know, with the, uh, uh, oh, what did I forget the name of right now, uh, the. The small housing unit, uh.
E D U?
No, well, yeah, the A D U's, but also, uh, tiny houses. Uh, movement that started out there, you know, I know there've been tiny houses proposed in both Minneapolis and St. Paul. I, I don't know that we want them here, but I don't know that we don't want them here, especially because like I say, I think some of the houses that are out there. Now are less than a thousand square feet.
Absolutely, they are.
Yeah.
So, you know, the, would we, you know, especially if somebody wanted to build a new home. Uh, in, in an already developed neighborhood that has some of these. Would we say, well, you've got to build bigger than what's there if they don't want to build bigger?
Well, actually we, we would based on our table five.
Yeah.
The minimum. Little livable floor area for a one-story single family is nine hundred square feet. So that's something to consider too when we start.
Yeah.
Diving into this house, how small, do we, we want to regulate size?
Yeah, I, in many respects, I would say that we don't really want to regulate size. Just my, my thinking is that, you know, if. Okay, I, I can see a need to regulate size if you want to say that you need to have a minimum number of square feet for someone to exist. Uh, comfortably.
Which I think is accomplished in the building code.
Yeah. And, and the other thing is, you know, if somebody says, well. I've got a piece of property and all I want to do is build a retirement home for myself and I just need five hundred and fifty square feet. Why should we really care as long as the building, you know, fits the neighborhood and all that? Yeah, they may have a problem reselling it later on because who else wants something that tiny?
Right.
But on the other hand, you know, we, I don't think we're putting a maximum size, you know, somebody comes in. Other than, you know, ground coverage and that type of thing, you know, somebody comes in and they've got a five acre lot and they say, I want to build a. Ten thousand square foot mansion. We don't say no, they may still have a problem finding someone to buy it later, but. You know, I just feel like it's one of those things that. If you. It, it's kind of your responsibility.
What is the, what is the reason that we would put forth to require certain square footages?
I think that historically it has been to limit low income housing.
Yeah, it, well, and, uh. Usually it's put up there as a way of keeping slums from happening, but it's still basically the same thing.
Yeah, well, yeah, the world is evolving and people now do want different.
People are doing tiny houses and they're doing very nice tiny.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And living in them very happily.
Yeah.
And it has nothing to do with income. It has more to do with their own comfort. So. I'm not sure that we wouldn't want to allow that. Which would mean then we'd have to take away the square footage requirement.
Right, or at least we need to knock it down considerably.
Yeah.
You know, I could see maybe saying nothing less than two hundred and fifty or three hundred square feet. Something like that, you know, if we want to do that kind of thing, but I'd say if we want to do that kind of thing, let's take a look at. The tiny home, homes that are out there and find what's a, what we feel is a reasonable baseline. And then say from there up.
Yeah.
But, you know, otherwise, otherwise I, I just feel like we're putting restrictions on people that. Among other things may make it more difficult for somebody to find a home in the future.
And I think the reference to quality of materials and things like that is much more important.
Yes.
Than the size. And that's in here in several different places where we're talking about quality materials and matching it with the neighborhood and other.
Exactly.
Other language like that.
So let me ask a question on the square footage topic. Wouldn't, I mean, that, that would just mean that if it's going to be a variance. That they would have to request the variance to be less square footage for that specific property, right? So if we didn't change the square footage, the only very, the only, the only change would be is that that individual. Would have to ask for variance. So if I look at that map and I look at where would those potential. I mean, um. I don't know, but I mean, again, speculative only, um. I would venture to say that most development that we see is looking usually seems to be as adding a square footage. As opposed to going the other direction.
Yeah.
And so with that being the outlier, would it be easier to keep the square footage requirement?
And just have them seek those variants if they want it.
I guess I just, I lean more towards making the code, uh.
Less regulatory.
Exactly, less regulatory.
Less regulatory.
If nothing else.
You're a small government guy.
Well, in a way, but my thought is that if you. Have a variance procedure on something like this. Then you, you're less likely to have the individual want to do these things. They're going to read the code, they're going to see.
Yeah.
You're not supposed to do this and we don't want. To have to put in the ampersand, you know, unless you require a, a variance on every single one of these things.
Yeah.
So I'd rather have it be more open so that people have the idea they can do it. Uh, without restriction or, you know, whatever the restriction is, then say, you, you know, we don't allow this, but. In this case, you can come to us and ask for a sport.
Yeah.
Variance is a unique thing to think about in this particular.
For the average person, it's, it, it appears to be a real pain too.
It, it's definitely a pain for everybody, including staff, but as far as like the house that's too small for the ordinance that I want. I mean, very, it's usually my property is the problem.
Yeah.
I can't do what I want because there's something dimensionally strange about this property. So the but four test of the variance or whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the statutory language. I, I, it's, how do you apply that to my house that I want is not as big as you said it has to be? It's strange and I, I like the idea of having lots regulatory situations if we want to. Adhere more closely with what our comp plan says, which I think is find more avenues for different kinds of housing throughout the community. So I, I would suggest that that would be in a line that would. You know, supporting our comp plan initiative.
So let me ask another question. Again, I'm not for against, I just want you guys to know. By changing that square footage or taking some of that language out, does that change a potential builder's approach? To anything that they would do with a property as opposed to an individual homeowner?
It could.
I honestly think there's going to be so few instances that somebody would want.
I, I'm, we, we all know that if there's a loophole, we'll figure it out, right?
Yeah.
It's the way, it's the, we're all wired, right? So I only ask because if by doing so, are we creating another workaround for somebody that could? Be creative, think outside the box and do something that would. Maybe be not what our intention is. Again, just asking.
By eliminating them, sorry.
I was just going to say there's still. Restrictions, you can't have, you know, two houses on. One property unless one of the houses is less than.
Certain rules.
Right, so there already are certain rules that would prevent somebody from trying to. You know, game it by saying I'm going to have two houses that are each nine hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, it's an instance like that.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I mean, I could probably put a whole bunch of tiny houses on my property. I could, if I really wanted to, could probably, if, if I could figure out a way to foul. Find those loopholes, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, who's going to do that?
Yeah, I guess it's, I, I just bring it up because this is the kind of stuff I have to deal with at Mindot all the time as I'm reviewing plans.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's a pain in the neck to have to go in and. Look for, you know, what codes, what city code is what exception and what have you. So I like to make it simple for the planners.
These are really good questions too. So, uh, it's, it's very valuable discussion and. I, I am also of the belief that fewer regulations are in order. It's easier to enforce what you do want.
Yeah.
And I like people to have the freedom to do reasonable things with their property.
Completely agree.
You know, don't, and, and even, even the comments that, uh, Mr. Smalls was making about, about parking R Vs. There are aspects of the way our ordinance is written. I know we had much, much discussion about parking. About two years ago, right? About two years ago. Lot of discussion about parking and parking, you can park this kind of vehicle here and that kind of vehicle there and you can't park that one here. And I mean, it's just swimming around in your head until you realize that. You can't enforce this thing.
Yeah.
It's in the ordinance, but you can't enforce it. And so, so why do we even have it there? So that's, I guess, I'm also of the mind, let's not put stuff in there that we really. Aren't going to enforce or will have great difficulty enforcing, which is exactly why you're talking to the enforcement people.
Well, yeah.
You know, you're getting them involved just so that we can know that it makes sense.
But also from Cameron's perspective.
Yep.
From the planner view and zoning administration, this ordinance is all over the place. It's so hard to find. The regulations that you're looking for.
Right.
So I think that streamlining to the what's important, what do we care about, what do we want enforced is going to be exceptionally helpful for everybody.
Right, agreed.
Yeah, because Patrick says it really is more the, the material and the way things are constructed that we would need to care about, not. Not the square footage per se.
Yeah, we don't want a tarp paper shack.
Right.
Um, it'd be nice if it was, you know, nice materials, quality construction. And if it's only five hundred square feet, fine.
How do you?
I'm good with that.
How do you regulate? Or quantify or I don't know what it is, but what's quality construction?
Well, I don't know, but it's in here several times. It's, it's a very subjective measuring step. There's no question about it.
Oh, yeah.
But there is.
That was one of my questions that I've been holding in the back, back channel here.
There also reference to, um, fitting within the, the neighborhood or something along those lines.
That, that is more useful because.
It is.
Evaluate, okay, you have bricks and you're siding or whatever.
Yeah.
There's, you know, in Minneapolis and St. Paul, they have various versions of. Classes of materials. So brick is the, you know, class one, that's a great material.
Right.
You can use anywhere you want, any amount, but if you're going to use hardy lap siding, that's like a class three material. You can only use that in. Twenty percent of a facade or something like that. So I mean. Even that's subjective though, I mean.
And those bricks not necessarily mean anything to planners. Brick does.
Right.
A hardy lap siding.
There's a good, there's a good description here and I'm looking at L seven. Designed to consist of exterior materials compatible with residential development in the area. With due regard to architectural quality and massing structures. And that was in here a couple of times, designed with suitable penetration. So. Okay, there's so many different ways you can do that design. But we aren't telling them it has to be brick or it has to be stone. And I think that's the way it should be, especially for residential development, small residential.
Small.
Well, generally small, but in that case it's multi-family, so it could be a big apartment building.
Right, basically three plus units you have to apply, but do we want to set those same standards for materials for single family and two family?
I thought it was in here more than once.
For a single family?
Sorry.
What's our language now for a single family?
It's gotta be designed to consist of exterior materials compatible with residential development in the area with due regard to architectural quality and the massing structures.
That's in the townhouse develop, developments.
Similar language, you know?
Is the same. And under two-family dwelling, it's the same.
I, I didn't spend any time reviewing the regulations under these, so I don't have.
But I think that's, I mean, that's pretty good language and still leaves a lot of variability.
Yeah.
But to say it fits in the neighborhood, I think is, is really the key.
I would suggest not going too much farther than that for single family.
Right, agreed.
So they, I think the, the term quality is definitely overused.
Yes.
Cause in S two. Uh, couple houses must be a quality design, use high quality materials and governed by a superior development.
Yeah, that.
What is a superior development plan as opposed to an inferior?
Yeah, that one needs to be rewritten, among other things.
Sorry, I mean, but I, again, I, I, I just use this sentence just to. You bring context to what we've been talking about, um. You bring context to what we've been talking about. There's a lot of subjectivity in the current and. Uh, obviously the reasons why we're going through this, but.
Well, and of course, we do have to be somewhat subjective on these because otherwise we're gonna wind up. You know, getting into lost in details about specifying the number of penny nails and square feet. So, but. I definitely agree with what you're saying, you know, it's, let's not leave it so wide open.
It, we, we understand what is trying to be said, it could probably be said better.
Bingo.
That's the point.
That's the point.
One of the things I do is spec writing. Classic, it's classic, uh, use as few words as possible to get your message across.
Yes, yes.
More words is not better. At least that's my theology.
So Brandy, back to where we started. With the definition, if I recall, on the table. Is, did, is there specific areas that you did want us to walk through tonight?
I don't know, I think this conversation is useful on.
I, I mean, I think it's been very useful, yeah. I mean, especially as we think about down the road and as we start tackling and. Uh, take, taking some of these pieces is just some considerations that we need to keep in the back of our mind as we go through this.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that if you are comfortable with this kind of discussion approach, it's helpful in this type of. Project because every part of the ordinance touches some other part of the ordinance and. If you think you've nailed the residential stuff, you didn't and you gotta go back to it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So it could take us a couple of different meetings to even.
Oh, yeah.
Get through this. But I, I think that. We've made some decisions for these departments. We don't mean, we're gonna simplify our dwelling types to be. One unit, two units or three plus units.
And you did say something about the. Twin home being different from, uh, or a, what is referred to here as a twin house. So that's terminology thing.
Just get rid of that.
But, but that was on a single lot. As opposed to a townhouse or duplex, which are on multiple lots.
The twin from, like my training is the duplex but on two lots.
But this one says on one lot and that's how it differs from a duplex.
Cuz I always thought, I mean, a duplex could be on a single.
W, near the end, yeah. A twin house says unlike duplexes, twin houses are located on a shared single lot.
Oh, well, then that's.
That's what's unique about that. Okay.
Cuz it's the opposite.
Oh, okay, well, but a duplex. You're saying is, should be the one on a single lot.
Yeah.
That's what differentiates them. In that case. If a twin house is on two lots, then it's a townhouse and you can get away, get, take twin house right out of. Cuz a, a twin house on two lots is the same as a townhouse.
Correct.
How do we define townhouses?
Townhouse is two or more on individual lots. Which I think is fine.
Yeah.
That's perfectly good.
Okay, I like it.
The townhouse definition I thought was, I mean, that's going in the right direction. It's, it's pretty broad. Two or more, there's, there's reference, different, different aspects of how are they. And how are they combined, if you will?
So without me reading this right, then, single fam- family is one, unit one lot, duplex is two, that's one lot. A townhouse, like you said, multiple units.
Multiple units on multiple lots.
Connected.
But connected.
Are they in a row? Does it matter?
Doesn't matter.
It could, okay, so any configuration.
You could do a quad.
Quad, so that.
You know, where there, where it's four corners of a, of a building.
So how is that different than a multi-family then?
Good question. Well, in a two family dwelling is two families living in a single residence, right?
Really isn't a zoning thing?
It really isn't a zoning, well, is it a zoning thing or isn't it? That, I think what's differentiating a two family dwelling is you can have. Um, the separate kitchen and separate, if I'm remembering right.
I think that might be chapter one fifty-two instead, which is structures and premises maintenance and occupancy code. I think that's an occupancy code for you.
Yeah, yeah. I think the two family dwelling, that whole block needs to be. Going through very carefully and I haven't had time to go through it carefully myself.
Yep, I agree.
That, that particular definition was looking really convoluted and it gets into the PUD and it gets, I mean, there were. A whole bunch of. Components of that, that, that were confusing to me.
That's a, that's a question to take into consideration. Do we wanna allow clusters?
What is a cluster?
Um, more than one. Two family essentially on a single parcel, so kind of like a condoized situation. Which is basically what this is trying to.
Isn't that the same as a townhouse?
No, there's multiple properties and it's a townhouse.
Okay. Is that a cottage development then? So you're talking about, so is this the multi-fan, multi-family dwelling that you're referring to? Where you've got multiple families on one lot?
No, wait, what, what were we?
Containing three or more dwelling units?
We were initially talking about, um. I can get my touchpad to work. The two family dwelling.
Yeah.
So I think we need to look at two family dwelling. Because it's. On a single parcel. Well, containing two dwelling units, they each have separate housekeeping and cooking facilities. So.
So is that, so, oh, we pause for a second.
It's basically duplex.
So that sounds like a duplex to me.
Exactly.
And so how would that be different than a multi-family dwelling?
Could be more than two.
Trying to understand the difference.
The multi-family is three or more dwellings.
I think so, yeah.
That's three or more in a two family dwelling?
Yeah, three or more units, three or more dwelling units, and I think it's also on a single parcel.
So two family would be a duplex, right?
Yeah, so I think we're gonna.
We already.
Yeah.
And just go with duplex.
Okay.
Single family duplex, townhome and multifamily, and then the multifamily in the townhome, there may be some interplay there. Just because you could have. A multifamily that is in fact also a town. So that might need to be further clarified, like he would say, like a.
What was the question you asked before that about, we wanna allow multiple two family dwellings on the same.
That's what's under, under this V is basically saying that if you have a large parcel.
Then you need a PUD.
Yeah, and you wanna put a bunch of.
Yeah.
I think that makes it a PUD.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, I think about when I was first starting my career and we were designing townhouses, I lived in one for a while and it was a quad. And then we were doing some townhouses. We did as many as eight row houses, row townhouses, lined up side by side. And we did some twos and some fours and sixes and stuff like that, but we did as many as eight. And that's all allowable in the townhouse scenario. With this ordinance.
It just doesn't ever happen.
So can I?
It's, well, it probably couldn't happen in North St. Paul. I don't think there's property for it.
Ask another question. Uh, I, I actually have two. I have one to that topic. Uh, second, we did, did we decide that twin houses and duplexes are the same?
Yeah, I think so.
So twin houses, duplexes and two family dwelling.
Twin houses are, are the same, twin houses based on the conversation is the same as a townhouse with two.
Twin houses are.
You can just strike both of those red ones.
Strike twin houses.
I added those, we don't need them.
Got it. And a two flat?
Yep, same thing. It's basically a duplex, but just up and down instead of.
Yeah, yeah, you don't need that.
So you had, you had asked the question, thank you for that, by the way, um, you had asked the question about. Where in North St. Paul could that happen? As we were a few weeks, few months ago, going through that zoning map and should a individual acquire multiple parcels?
Right.
Now you have a scenario where that would be applicable.
And it would be a PUD.
That is correct.
Wait, for what?
Well, we were talking about an eight, eight townhouse thing.
Six or an eight?
Yeah.
I don't think it's, it doesn't have to be a PUD. It's actually not a PUD.
It depends on, it depends on how much, how big it is and how developed it is. Yeah, it could just be a replat if it's only one building. But if it's multiple buildings, you start getting into PUD category. I think.
I think so too.
I mean, that would be the intent, in my mind, that would be the intent.
But that is a scenario where that could, that would be a viable scenario to happen in North St. Paul.
Right.
Yeah, I agree, especially with those lots that are not, that are long and not big.
That is correct. Cuz our first house in Illinois was a townhome and there were eight of us in one building and there were, were. There had to have been sixteen of those buildings and they were in one area and then it was all.
Little privacy walls in the backyard.
Uh, no.
No.
No privacy walls allowed.
Little, little, little short wings to separate your decks or anything like that.
Uh, there was not. It was pretty open, but they used landscaping and bushes.
Right, right.
As that privacy barrier.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it was a.
Very feasible.
It was a very small pad of patio.
Huh, well, it's seven thirty, just wanted to point that out. Do you wanna keep going or how do you feel?
I, I have one thing that I wanted to talk about and that is the prefabricated home.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see any reason why a prefabricated home would be out of the question, especially with today's technology.
That's how I feel too.
They're building buildings like that all the time. I just reviewed one today.
It's a single fa- it's just a different.
It's not a residential building, it's a commercial building, but it's all prefabricated.
Right. Style of construction.
Different style of construction, so it should be allowed, I would think, without.
Do we even need to call it out?
I don't think you do.
I don't think we do.
Cuz it's a construction style.
Are we not talking about like trailer houses though with the wheels?
No, cuz that's not, that's a manufactured home.
But then there's the other thing that we have called modular dwelling, which.
Yeah, I was gonna.
Not the same.
What is it?
Bring up those three.
What is modular dwell? No, we didn't, really.
I say we do, well, we have to define it, but we do have a lot of regulations for it.
Can I ask that we take modular, prefab and mobile and start our next meeting with?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Because I, I think there's, this is probably a conversation that we're gonna need to, some discussion about.
Manufactured home and manufactured home park are two things that. I see as being different from a modular dwelling or a prefabricated.
I agree.
Right, I agree.
Even though they're also prefabricated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're talking about a different quality of what you're building.
I believe they're also regulated by statute too in a different way.
Yep.
That makes it.
And building code.
Yeah, right.
So that they should be handled differently.
So what we probably need to make sure is that statutorily, we know what we're talking about. But I think probably the modular and the prefabricated. Can probably be all put together.
What I put here for the manufactured home park. Okay, so what we have here in this draft for manufactured home and home park, they are the statutory definitions.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that makes sense.
I would suggest that we just get rid of the modular, cuz in my mind, that's the prefab.
I think so, yeah.
We, we don't need to regulate them anymore.
Right, right.
Less is better than.
Agreed, agreed.
The ones that are tricking me the most, that I just don't have that much experience with are these dependency living arrangements, the lodging house, the boarding house. So I think I'm gonna have any more conversations with Jason about that. And then the cottage development, I don't think that we need that either. It's PUD basically, if you're gonna.
Yeah, that's.
That's what I was thinking too, yeah.
Same.
And anything smaller than a thousand square feet, we already had that discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
In a PUD, you might do that.
Yep.
Do a cottage development PUD and make the buildings whatever size you think you could sell and. It might be a cluster of tiny homes.
So how do you want to?
Same thing about my property there.
Really nice carpet. It tastes totally done.
They can, they can.
They will have quality construction.
They can fight with the raccoons over my property, go for it. The raccoons and the deer, they'll take over.
With quality design.
What, what format do you want this to come out in next? Do you want me to just make the changes? Do you wanna?
I think this is good. I like the fact that you've added comments.
Yes.
When you're making comments about the statutory information, that, that's really good. Uh, it can be all marked up. When it gets so marked up that you can't understand it anymore, then we gotta probably talk about something else.
How about? How about we take this away? This is our starting point from today. What I believe based on our discussion and Chris will confirm in the minutes, what I think that we've read on, I'm just gonna make those changes and. Take them out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, so it's clean except for anything that we haven't yet discussed, those will be the market and the changes.
Good.
Yeah, okay. Easy, like that.
Easy. We like to make your job easy.
Appreciate that.
You've got plenty to do. Okay, that being the case, if we're done with item seven on our list, we're looking for reports. I'll start with you, Mr. Brennan. Do you have any, anything to, to report?
Oh, just my annual plug that the Minnesota Water Resources Conference is coming up. Uh, October, I believe it's the seventeenth and eighteenth this year. So I'm on the, I serve on the planning committee. As the MINDOT representative and that's coming up, so. It's a two-day conference for, uh, water minded, water resources minded folks, so consider attending if you guys are interested. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Muir?
Don't have a thing.
Parade is next week.
Parade.
And so if you're gonna be on, I guess, uh, Chris had sent out an email earlier today.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't get that.
Yeah.
Oh, if you wanted to participate in a parade, it was instructions on where to be and what to do.
And some of those details are going to be followed on what time to meet him.
Yeah.
Oh, is that part of it again?
No, he was just confirming to everybody that there will be a, a public works vehicle for each of. The people that are participating.
For each person?
I don't know if we're all gonna be in one.
We get to, we get to sit in a.
Can I get?
Just don't let me drive it.
Or maybe, maybe it'll be a dump truck, you know, we'll just all be in the back.
I'll be in the back in launchers. Commissioner Wise?
I have nothing.
And I really have nothing cuz the parade was what I was going to mention.
Ah, everybody should be as bold as thunder.
Well, there's two planning conferences. There's the one in St. Cloud, which is the Minnesota State, but there's also the Upper Midwest, which is gonna be, I think, in. I forget what's town, it's in Iowa. I think it's Cedar Falls. I have to go to the closer one.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the national is coming next year.
It's in Minneapolis.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
And there's a Minnesota Preservation Conference too. I can't remember what that is, when that is and where.
You're thinking that we need to start a preservation commission?
No. What, what I think we discovered was that there, our best opportunity for doing, for defining historical. Areas in our city, we kinda did some studies and went for it and it just didn't come together, so. But there's very little opportunity, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Just because of the mix of things that have happened development wise.
Mm-hmm.
Over the years.
Eventually that we're next is gonna reach fifty years old and.
Exactly, and then, then maybe there's something you can do with it.
Um, I had one other thing, oh, I, we sent out a call through the newsletter, I think, and also on the website of we have openings.